Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. Mark Conway, Chair of the Committee, representing the 4th District. In attendance today, I have Councilman Burnett, representing the 8th District. A couple of the other members are on their way, and they'll be running a little bit late, but we're going to get started regardless. Representing the Office of the President, I've got Dexter. I've got Dexter, and I've got Preston. And representing the Mayor's Office, I've got Dominic. And staff the Committee, Marguerite Curran. This afternoon, the Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 23-0377, Surveillance Technology Procurement, for the purpose of the Community Advisory Commission on Surveillance, excuse me, for the purpose of creating the Community Advisory Commission on Surveillance, providing for the membership and duties of the commission, requiring the City Council approval for the purchase of certain equipment, requiring city agencies to submit certain reports, defining certain terms, and generally relating to the city's procurement of surveillance technology. This bill was introduced on May 1st, 2023, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Burnett and Cohen. I'll open the floor to comments from the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues, and agency representatives. So, this bill, 23-0377, has similar intentions of the last bill we just discussed, but goes beyond the scope of facial recognition technology, and seeks to create more transparency, accountability, and oversight over the city's procurement and utilization of surveillance technology writ large across the city of Baltimore. The bill, similar to the last bill, ran up against some legal hurdles, so the first version of the bill gave the council more authority over that procurement process. As you'll hear or see in the Law Department's report, that created some issues between the balance of power outlined in the city charter between the Board of Estimates and the City Council pertaining to procurement of technology. But it does leave in some very important pieces. The first is it establishes a commission on surveillance, that would, a eleven-member commission, that would have a variety of perspectives from folks specializing in civil rights, reforming municipal government, police oversight and accountability, folks with the experience of the intersections of technology and ethics, representatives from community organizations, as well as folks recommended by the City Council. The duties of that board would be to provide reporting, oversight, and recommendations around the utilization of surveillance in our communities. The bill also, the amended version of this bill, should it pass, also has very extensive reporting requirements on a wide range of surveillance technologies, whether those be international mobile subscriber identity capturing, like cell site simulators, auto license plate readers, toll readers, CCTV cameras, as we spoke about earlier, biometric surveillance technology, but also including voice recognition software, iris recognition software, gate recognition software, facial recognition software, mobile DNA capture, gun detection in hardware, x-ray vans, surveillance cameras, body worn cameras. I mean, there's a long list. I don't want to go through all of them. But there's a wide range of tools that are used for the surveillance technology here in Baltimore City, primarily by law enforcement, but other agencies do as well. And at this point, there's not a lot of transparency on how this technology is used, where it's being used, what the impact is, how that data is being retained and potentially distributed to other government agencies, safeguards to protect the data that is being collected, and also primarily the concerns about equity and the disparate impact in Black and Brown communities in Baltimore City, where surveillance technology is often over-concentrated. And so, this pulls back the veil of the utilization of tech in surveillance technology, so that the citizens have a better understanding of what the city's being done, but also have a voice in the procurement process, though I'll be without an actual vote by their representatives on the City Council, an opportunity to organize, to raise issues, to raise red flags on the potential and very real impact that surveillance technology has on civil liberties and civil rights, and more importantly, over incarceration and over policing in Black and Brown communities in Baltimore City. And so, this is very much a transparency bill, is how I would describe it, and very similar to other types of efforts that we've taken under this body to have more of a transparent and accountable government to the citizens of Baltimore. And I'm happy to take questions after agency reports. We also are joined by Andrew from the, who you just met in the last hearing, to speak a little bit from the Maryland Office of the Public Defender, along with our other agencies. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. We're going to go into agency reports, and we're going to start first with the City Solicitor's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Rulie, on behalf of the City Solicitor's Office. Like the last bill, our report addresses the first reader version, and so I can certainly just briefly touch on that. Much of the same preemption issues that happened with the previous bill are in this one, so that was the majority of the report, as well as just simply noting the charter conflict, which places procurement in the Board of Estimates and Finance Departments and not with the council. And then, you know, as discussed in the other one, state law already governs data sharing, data record retention, and security for data. And so, that's all in our report for the first reader version. I was able to go through the amendments to the second reader version that have been proposed, and I could approve them with just two minor changes for form and legal sufficiency. And those two changes would be to delete the line in the bill that, or in the amendments that states that the government has to provide, quote, "the legal standard" for third-party access, because there isn't just one, it's going to be circumstantial. So that is, I guess, line 10 on page 12 of the amendments. And then, I believe, and also, it's also on page 15, the exact same language. And with those changes, I could approve the amended version that the sponsor put forward for form and legal sufficiency. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Hillary. We're going to go through the reports first and then open up to questions. Next, we've got the Department of Transportation.
Mr. Chair, thank you, and I do apologize that the final report has not been submitted, but we're kind of still actively reviewing the legislation based on the amendments, and we do intend to have a deeper dive conversation with the bill sponsor. However, I do want to mention some items and put on the record in this hearing. Specific to DOT, we do deploy a number of surveillance technologies to achieve our mission, which is generally to improve public safety. Some very obvious examples include the handhelds that our TEOs use for parking enforcement, and then also the automated enforcement that we discussed the last hearing, automated enforcement for speed, red light, and commercial vehicle enforcement, and soon, bus lane enforcement. Specific to the automated enforcement, as I had stated in the previous hearing, we do have a standard operating procedure that regulates how we use that technology, and we also have an existing memorandum of understanding with Baltimore City Police Department. We also have an ombudsman and a quality assurance team to ensure accuracy of those citations issued. Some other items that may not be as obvious, DOT operates a number of CCTV cameras around the city that is there to monitor in real-time traffic conditions on major corridors. And it's also worth noting that there's a degree of variation in terms of ownership referenced in the surveillance technology. Handhelds utilized by DOT Safety Division are owned by the agency, while automated enforcement cameras are owned, maintained, and operated by private vendors approved by the Board of Estimates, and then overseen by DOT's ATVS Division. DOT considers the use of these surveillance technologies as being critical towards agency operations and the department's overarching mission, again, to improve safety on city streets and corridors. For example, data collected from DOT's ATVS Division has consistently demonstrated a pattern of reduced prevalence of speeding on corridors where automated speed enforcement cameras have been implemented. I-83, the only locally operated, maintained interstate highway within the state of Maryland, has observed significantly reduced speeds since the implementation of the General Assembly authorized I-83 speed program. DOT strongly supports the use of these technologies as an effective means to safely and equitably enforce traffic regulations designed to save lives. We appreciate being part of this conversation, and we look forward to continuing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Next up, we've got the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood and Safety Engagement.
Thank you. We stand by our bill report, deferring to the Law Department on the legal and technical parameters here. Big picture, we support the establishment of a Community Advisory Commission to both provide oversight and recommendations and ensure transparency and equity, which is crucial here in the use of surveillance technologies.
Thank you, Jonathan. I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Ramos, who's just joined the meeting. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, everyone. Laura Larson, City Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by the bill response that was submitted.
Thank you, Laura. Next, we've got the, we've got BSIT.
Good afternoon. Art Ray, Baltimore City Information Technology, Director of Public Safety Services. We also stand behind our response provided November 3rd.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Baltimore City Police Department.
Good afternoon again. Erin Murphy, Director of Government Affairs for BPD. Just like the last bill, we've been in touch with the sponsor and his chief of staff, and we received the amendments on Monday, so we still have to go through them. We are here to answer questions, and we look forward to further discussion.
Thank you. And next, we've got the Office of Civil Rights and Wage Enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights has reviewed City Council Bill 23-0377, Surveillance Technology Procurement, and endorses a favorable committee report specifically regarding the establishment of the Community Advisory Commission on Surveillance. Our office wholeheartedly supports the sponsor's intent. As outlined in the legislation, we recognize the significance of granting those who have historically and disproportionately borne the impact of surveillance technology, the opportunity to shape its deployment, and exercise community oversight. This aligns with our commitment to fostering equity and ensuring that the voices of affected communities are central to the decision-making process. The establishment of the Community Advisory Commission on Surveillance, as proposed in this bill, serves as a vital mechanism for soliciting community input and involvement. This inclusive approach not only enhances transparency, but also promotes a more just and equitable utilization of surveillance technology. Our office encourages continued collaboration and engagement with impacted communities throughout the implementation of this legislation, and similar to our colleagues at Monsey, we defer to the Law Department on the technical pieces of the legislation.
Thank you, Tyler. And next, we've got the Maryland Office of the Public Defender.
Thank you, Honored. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Andrew Northrup, and as stated earlier, I'm in the Forensics Division of the Office of the Public Defender. I'm also a resident of the 14th District. I've been a public defender in Maryland since 2010, and most of that time has been in the Forensics Division. And since I've been here, the number of cases where surveillance technology has been used has risen exponentially. However, the increase is difficult to quantify, because often the use is not disclosed, or is couched in oblique language. In the case of cell site simulators, more commonly known as stingray, officers and prosecutors explicitly told or not told not to disclose the use of this technology pursuant to a nondisclosure agreement signed with, by their respective bosses and the company. The use of surveillance technology by law enforcement shows no sign of waning, and an MPIA request that we did earlier this year of the Baltimore Police Department showed that there were approximately 811 facial recognition match reports generated in 2022. Our office has been, only been made aware of a fraction of these, and considering that we represent 80% of the individuals in the court system, that's a little bit alarming. I mean, the fundamental problem with these technologies that may be highly evasive of limited efficacy or some combination of both are being used before they've been fully vetted and their limitations and shortcomings are understood. And rather than ineffectively and reactively litigating these technologies on a piecemeal basis, this bill seeks to establish a framework through which these technologies are fully and fairly disclosed, and add trust and transparency to the use of these technologies. And therefore, we would offer our support to this bill as well.
Thank you. I'm going to open up to questions from the Committee. I'll start with the sponsor, if you've got any.
No, I've talked to these folks. I've talked to the agency folks a lot. I think we're good, and we will have additional conversations on some of the provisions. We have meetings pending with DOT and additional conversations with BPD and law.
Got it. I have a question of my own. I know you made, you know, since the initial announcement of the bill, we made a lot of amendments to the bill, effectively leaving some core parts around the commission and the report. I don't have the delineated version. I'm curious around the remedies section, 42-11, if that's still part of the bill as we're thinking about it now, or has that been removed?
It's been removed, the whistleblower protections, and only because it was duplicative of already existing law. So those remedies are still there, they're just already in the code, and so that was duplicate.
Oh, no, no, not the whistleblower protections. The remedies regarding violation of the subtitle and fines.
Yes.
Or fines that the agency would pay to the public if they violate this law. And so, the 42-11, Section B, you've got three bullets listed here, and if there are, if an agency, any individual, an individual who prevails in a city, in a civil action under this section may recover for each violation against the agency that negligently violated provisions of the subtitle $1,000, $5,000, and other explanations within the bill. I'm just curious if that's still a part of it, or how that would apply if this becomes a commission to report if it isn't removed.
Yeah, you may not have the interliniated version in that one, it's removed. I'm looking at it right now, yeah, that's, again, those are, there's already protections in place in other parts of the law.
Got it.
Where people have other, there's other remedies already exist. That's out.
Okay. Super helpful, because then my next question would have been to finance and what we anticipate by way of risks, but since it's not a part of the bill, that...
Yeah, essentially, as Hillary has described already, like, we don't really have a way to give people, citizens, the authority to get recourse that would be considered private right of action, which we are not allowed to do in Maryland law.
Got it. Any other questions? No questions? No questions? No questions. So we will move on to public testimony, and in case any other members come back, we'll open the floor to them. So if you would like to testify, I hope you signed up in the back. We'll get that now. If... Seems that went missing. What we'll do is, we'll just, if you would like to testify, please stand, we'll acknowledge you, please state your name, so we get it for the record. For those that are joining us virtually, please use the raise hand function, we'll acknowledge you and unmute you, so that you have two minutes to testify as well. We'll start with folks here in the room. If you'd like to testify, please stand.
State your name.
All right, and please make sure, please, and you can come forward, please state your name for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Martez Gaines. I'm a resident of the 8th District. I'm a senior organizer with Organizing Black, but today I'm standing as a representative for the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs. I was in the last hearing and on the other bill for FRT, and I mentioned that we held a screening of coded bias a few weeks ago. It was a really well-attended screening and panel discussion, and it was really an effort to deepen understanding around technology, particularly facial recognition technology, and its pervasive bias. What we know is that there is no existing FRT tech that does not have significant racial bias. FRT companies boast a 99% expected, excuse me, effectiveness rate, but this is in quote-unquote optimal conditions. The systems generally work best on middle-aged white men's faces, and not so well for people of color, women, children, or the elderly. It also doesn't work for gender diverse folks who don't fit into the neat boxes. The error rate is highest for Black women who are misidentified nearly 35% of the time from a report from the ACLU. We know that the police are currently using FRT with no guardrails, leading to wrongful arrests. A notable example that we heard about in the last hearing as well, in 2022, Alonzo Sawyer, right outside the city limits, was charged with two counts of assault and held based on a false FRT identification, even though the person who had assaulted the bus driver was nearly 20 years younger. Without regulation, BPD would be able to use FRT from anything from identifying or wrongly identifying suspects in a crime to monitoring presence at political protests. This is invasive and continues to violate our rights to privacy. Again, FRT and other invasive surveillance technology really have no place in our city. We need strong guardrails, including on where we get them from, how we get them, all things related to procurement. And so, as a coalition of concerned individuals and organizations, we really want to support this bill offered by Councilmember Burnett as well, again, as a first step around guardrails. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to acknowledge Councilwoman Porter, who just joined the meeting. Anyone else here in person that would wish to testify, please step forward. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Emily Mendenhall. I live in South Baltimore. And there are two things that I wanted to say. I work in marketing technology and data science, and have spent quite a bit of time dealing with legally surveilling everybody's actions, so that I can sell you products for the companies that I work for, and pretty familiar with access to this data, pretty familiar with the way that this works, in ways that we don't necessarily think about surveillance, and not so much what this conversation is about here. But it is surveillance. And I was recently asked to sit on the Board of the Neighborhood Association in Federal Hill as the treasurer, and one of the members of our Neighborhood Association, who had experienced a number of different assaults on his safety and personhood, and just felt generally unsafe, used a lot of that fear to apply for grants from the state to get surveillance cameras that he thought that he was completely okay to install around the neighborhood, and used that fear as a driver for a lot of the neighborhood to do that, as is often the case. And when I approached them, kind of with a background in data, with a background in understanding this, to say, one, you shouldn't be using public funds to do this, and, two, the data or video surveillance or whatever you're getting out of this should be publicly accessible to everyone, it was kind of shoved under the rug. And my concern is twofold in this, and I just use that as an example, because I know we're talking specifically about the city here, not a neighborhood, but it's happening in other, in situations, in smaller little cells, driven by a lot of fear, miseducation, and misunderstanding, whether or not it is done with good heart. So, knowing that that's happening, and just an example, you know, a block down that way, is I would ask that, I have a lot of conversations with my family members, with my neighbors, in situations like that, where I might be the person who's most educated about how the data that gets collected is used, but most people don't really understand. So I would, I would ask, and in support of this, that a part of this is also about educating, not just giving access, sitting out in the ether, but giving education to the populace of Baltimore and the members of the city, who might not know, one, that this is happening, that they're being surveilled, so shout it, we're surveilling you, if it's happening, right? But also making everyone aware of access to, and how to gain access, and understand that data and the tools to be able to, to be a part of that conversation. Because it's, even out of good intention, can be used in a negative way, and we've seen that over and over throughout history when surveillance comes into play. So, that was just my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. As you were talking, a question came to mind regarding the composition of the commission, and this is a question for the sponsor. I noted... You can sit down. I noted, we didn't have any represented, any representatives on the commission from the industry, or anybody that, like, understands how this stuff works. Would, have you thought about maybe someone that understands the ins and outs of how the technology works? And this is on page two of the first reader version, so 56-8-2.
I had the bill up, and then I closed it. I'm sorry.
Sure, I can, while you're looking it up, I'll read what we have here. It would be a commission of 11 members, two representatives from organizations that focus on reforming urban municipal governments, two from organizations specializing in civil rights, two from organizations that focus on police oversight and accountability. One with experience in the intersection of technology and ethics, two from a community organization, and two from the council, council members, members of the City Council.
Yeah, so I think the intent was the tech, the two spots for that, or one spot for that, was to have someone there. I mean, the intention of this board isn't to, I mean, and there's also two members that can be nominated by the council, so I mean, those are spaces too. The intention of this isn't to have more of a community oversight perspective on the work, not necessarily someone that's a security industry advocate, who may be advocating for the expansion of surveillance technology. I mean, it's just not what this board is intended to do. I mean, it's, the intent of this bill is to sort of look at the ethical and civil rights perspectives of how this tech is used, and having an advocate for it isn't necessarily the space, I think, for this particular...
I'm not suggesting an advocate. To be clear, I'm suggesting somebody that actually understands how the technology works.
Yeah, I mean, we can figure out a way to work that in. I think it's a little of a challenge to find someone that would, I mean, there's, we're talking a wide array of technologies, this isn't, I think it would be a little easier if it was just facial recognition or biometrics to find someone, but someone that knows about, like, license plate readers, and cellphone capturing data, and FRT, it's kind of a challenge there, but, well, that's, that's good feedback. And so, yes, we're open to reconfiguring that and figuring out what makes sense.
Yeah, just a thought. Thank you. I got a question from Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And in a similar line of questioning for the bill sponsor, two shall represent, two shall be representatives of an organization that focuses on reforming urban municipal governments. How are you all defining someone that kind of moves in that similar vein? How are you all defining that? Oh, should I repeat my question? I think it's all. Yes.
I mean, I think the intention would be, and I'm naming names, but this isn't really what the, I don't have any individual organization in mind, but someone like Organizing Black or the ACLU, folks that are leaders of a beautiful struggle, I mean, those are entities that have just come to mind, there's a lot, and if I'm missing, there's a lot of people I'm missing, so I'm sorry, especially folks in the room who are doing amazing work.
Yeah.
But yes, anyone in this ecosystem of advocacy organizations and reform are the kind of folks that we would want on this board, particularly that have a civil rights perspective, social justice perspective, but obviously, you know, that would not be a requirement. But the idea would be in folks that are actively engaged in advocacy or overlooking for.
And so, the only reason, the only reason why I bring that up is because I was hoping that it would be a broad definition for that type of work, because one of the things in our previous hearing that, Kimmy, you had brought up is various healthcare organizations and health institutions that have that type of, that have that type of insight, that may be able to help out in this respect, as far as, like, developing some critical care standards, just some critical standards in general as the city moves forward in this respect. Thank you.
Yeah, I think both of those are really good feedback, and we'll work offline to try and maybe broaden some of the definitions, because we were trying to admittedly not create a... create another unwieldy board. We have a lot of those, and the feedback we've gotten, and you all have experienced is, it's like, hard to get folks to do it at the process, so we didn't want it to be too big. And so we know that there's going to be some gaps, but maybe we can work on, like, redefining some of the positions that we have or reducing, you know, instead of having two reform organizations, maybe it's one, and then we have another one that's focused on tech. I think we can play around with this to try and cover those bases that both of you are raising without making the board too big and operable and unable to make decisions because it's too large or we can't field enough people for that, so. That was, we were trying to thread the line there. We got a lot of feedback from the mayor's office about boards, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else looking to testify in public? So we've got two people. We're going to start with you, ma'am, and then we're going to go to you. Please state your name again for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Priya Hay Chatterjee. I am a born and raised Marylander and newly a Baltimore City resident of the 14th District. I'm an advocate for reproductive health, rights, and justice. Reproductive justice is defined as the freedom to maintain personal bodily autonomy, to have children, to not have children, and to parent the children we have in safe and sustainable communities. The city's continuous investment in overpolicing and surveillance technologies flies in the face of reproductive justice values. From the near-million-dollar investment in stingray technology, which the ACLU argues is a violation of our right to privacy, to the use of facial recognition technology, which is more likely to mistake black and brown faces, the city continues to prioritize spending on criminalizing its citizens rather than investing in their well-being. So rather than continuing to spend egregious amounts of money on surveilling and criminalizing its citizens, I urge the council to implement a total ban on facial recognition technology and to instead invest in programs that actually allow us to raise families in safe and sustainable communities, such as affordable housing, substance use treatment, public transit, and low- or no-cost health services. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good afternoon, Chair Conway, and members of the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee. My name is Hannah Zinker, and I am a resident of District 1. I am testifying on behalf of Dues United for Justice, which organizes more than 1,600 people in Baltimore City to support social, racial, and economic justice campaigns and amplifying the demands of the Campaign for Justice, Safety, and Jobs in support of the strongest possible guardrails for surveillance technology procurement in Baltimore. I have dedicated my professional life to working against injustices in our world. I have my law degree from the University of Cincinnati College of Law. I now work at a nonprofit that engages young people in service work and learning. Working at the Ohio Innocence Project during law school, I saw firsthand the devastating effects of mistakes and biases in our criminal legal system. One mistaken identity, one incorrect witness, one law enforcement officer who trusts their initial assessments in the face of evidence to the contrary can and will tear someone from their family for years, if not a lifetime. The power to take away another human being's liberties is a serious responsibility, and to make no mistake, that is what we do when we incarcerate. Therefore, I believe we must make every effort to eliminate bias and error in our criminal legal systems. We must make every effort to curtail the use of surveillance technologies like facial recognition technology. FRT, especially when procured and used without the most careful oversight, does not lead to safer, thriving communities. We might think FRT makes us safer, why not just take advantage of these advances in technology? But I am here to remind you why not. Study after study shows that FRT does not make us safer. In fact, FRT, like so many tools of law enforcement, disproportionately impacts marginalized communities. Here in Baltimore, black people face overwhelming disparities at every stage of the criminal punishment system, from street-level surveillance and profiling through to sentencing and conditions of confinement. FRT would undoubtedly be more used in black and brown neighborhoods than in predominantly white neighborhoods, and the technology is notoriously inaccurate, the darker a person's skin tone is. It is rarely our intention to create systems of inequality and injustice, but we must be constantly aware of the full impact of the policy decisions we make. Over and over, researchers have found that a punitive system of justice neither creates safer communities nor reduces recidivism. Rather, community-based, holistic approaches improve people's lives and therefore reduce the conditions that lead to what we call crime. Yet every dollar spent on high-tech surveillance is a dollar not spent on other community improvements that would do much more to benefit the lives of its residents. Personally, I believe in a system of justice very different than the one we offer today. I believe in a system that takes into account the whole of who someone is, their life experiences and their humanity. I believe in a system that helps our citizens, not harms them. I believe in a system that is led by people who can admit when we have been wrong. Currently, the police are using FRT with no guardrails, leading to wrongful arrests, such as Alonzo Sawyer's 2022 arrest, based on a false FRT identification. It is my hope that you will think of people like Mr. Sawyer and all those who have been wrongfully accused and convicted when making your decisions about the bill before us today. It is not an overstatement to remind you that people's futures are in your hands, and we therefore encourage you to vote for the strongest guardrails for surveillance technology procurement, for the strongest guardrails on surveillance technology in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to, oh, we have one more person, two more people.
And again, my name is Killian McGinnis. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. I'm a graduate student at the University of Maryland Baltimore in the School of Social Work, and I'm here to echo the calls to restrict surveillance technology in the city of Baltimore and also to uplift something that was mentioned in the previous hearing, which was the Baltimore Police Department's well-funded connections with Israeli surveillance companies and the Israeli government, which is, we have all seen in the past month and for many years before that. The Israeli police and military forces have killed over 12,000 Palestinian people in Gaza and in the West Bank. They also have a well-known practice of arresting Palestinians and other citizens of Israel who speak out against their war crimes for simple social media posts. They do that using surveillance technology, which the city government has already procured funds to attain. The BPD also participates in exchange programs with Israeli security forces, and the city council allows Baltimore's public agencies to contract with Israeli security companies as well. This, again, this Israeli government has a well-documented history of human rights abuses as backed by such organizations like the United Nations.
If we could just stick to, I don't want to conflate issues between what we're trying to address here. If it's relevant to.
Yeah, so this is directly relevant to the issue of procurement of surveillance technology in the city of Baltimore.
I appreciate parts of what you're saying, and I think it's important that you're able to make the case on this bill, so please.
So, yeah, what I'd like to just articulate is that apartheid here is connected to apartheid around the world and other apartheid states. And it's important that our city funds not be used for business with Israel, not be used to procure surveillance technology that was researched and developed and tested in Israel and that continues to reinforce a system of racial discrimination and apartheid here and abroad.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good afternoon. I'm Teresa Columbus. I am an artist and a teaching artist here in Baltimore City. I'm here as part of SURGE, the organization standing up for racial justice in Baltimore, and I simply want to say that black women are at the intersection of multiple oppressions in this city, moving towards technology that increases the injustices towards black women by, with technology that has proven to often be 35% incorrect for black women, and feels like the wrong direction to be moving. Of course, brown people have been discriminated against extremely in our justice system, and we can't, for any people, have technology that has such bias towards, towards our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're, oh, we got one more. Every time I say one more, one more pops up. I appreciate you guys, though.
Hi, my name is Bria Stare. I am a constituent of District 12. Sorry, I'm out of breath, I'm really nervous.
It's okay.
I don't have a speech prepared, but I do want to speak as a community member and as a trans feminine community member, that surveillance has historically been bad for transgender people, specifically black and brown transgender people and black and brown transgender women. And I can speak for myself in that I've been surveilled, targeted, and criminalized since I was a child, being trans. And the, I mean, there's entire books written on the ways that facial recognition technology reaffirms the gender binary, can misread transgender people, is connected to transgender healthcare bans, and even in attempts to, quote-unquote, protect trans people through hate crime legislation, these do not make trans people safer, specifically black and brown trans people. And that needs to be recognized, that we not only do not want more equitable FRT, we do not want FRT at all. And that money, I'm also a mental health professor, mental health counselor, and professor at Antioch University, New England, and that money could be invested in community mental health and other interventions that are regularly criminalized and leading to people being incarcerated. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilman Costello, who's joined the meeting. Anybody else? All right, we're going to go to testimony online, first starting with Barbara Zekic. Barbara, you're unmuted and should have the opportunity to speak.
I'm good, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to go to Jake Parker. Jake, you're able to speak.
Hi, Jake Parker here with the Security Industry Association, a nonprofit trade association in Silver Spring, representing public safety and security, providers of public safety and security-focused products, including those in Baltimore. So we're opposed to the bill, which basically imports a bad policy on public safety from places like San Francisco, California, and I think we're all familiar with what the results have been there. It's an experimental approach that is a carbon copy of similar measures promoted by several advocacy organizations that are flatly opposed to modern technologies for crime prevention and investigation. As broadly defined in the bill, surveillance technology is not just the 25 different things mentioned in the bill, but it can cover a virtually limitless number of technologies the way it's defined. It creates an unelected commission with, that is not required to have any experience in crime prevention, detection, or investigation, that is then empowered to demand city agencies and city councils change both policies and laws. So the track record on this, I think, is important to talk about, the result in communities elsewhere that have adopted similar ordinances, have experienced problems and delays with fielding public safety technologies that benefit communities. This includes, as reported in news reports, delay of body-worn camera systems in Cambridge, Massachusetts, delay of real-time crime center implementation in Dayton, Ohio, and possible elimination of over 17 different law enforcement technology systems in San Diego, as well as delays in CCTV security camera upgrades in Seattle, Washington. So the bottom line here is, you know, we agree with the bill's intent to protect Baltimoreans. We also understand the critical role the council already has in overseeing city agency uses of technologies. We appreciate that's being taken seriously, but if an act of this would wind up endangering the safety and security across the city by unnecessarily impeding the valuable safety and security tools during a time when we need them most, and for those reasons, we urge you to oppose the bill.
Thank you, Jake. Next up, we've got Delia. Delia, you are unmuted and are able to testify.
My name is Delia Drer, and I am a Baltimore City Public Schools teacher. I am calling in right now from my classroom during my lunch break. I'm also a member of District 12, and I am here to advocate for a total ban on facial recognition technology and to challenge the idea that surveillance technologies such as FRT can be reformed in order to make them equitable or to increase public safety and well-being. As others have stated, black and brown people in Baltimore experience extreme and disproportionate policing and incarceration in this city. As someone else has previously stated, surveillance technology is proven to be extremely inaccurate, particularly for black and brown people, young people, and queer and trans people. Even if this technology were accurate, we know that it would still be used to disproportionately police black and brown people and low-income people within this city due to the nature of policing in this city and this country. It being inaccurate is not the only concern. As an educator, I have to share that it is extremely disturbing to be discussing increased surveillance, that through its inaccuracy and also through its application in policing, will disproportionately impact my young black students who already experience police surveillance and violence in their daily lives. As a teacher, I care deeply for my students and their futures. I am calling in from a classroom that does not have air conditioning. I am calling in from a classroom that does not have sufficient school supplies, from a school that often does not have enough or nutritious enough food for my students to eat. I know that young people are the future of this city, and I know that many of my students are being pushed out of Baltimore due to lack of affordable, safe, and livable housing, economic opportunities, and a lack of public safety. Many of my students have experienced and witnessed violence in their life and also criminalization and policing. What my students haven't experienced is meaningful public safety and well-being in communities. Public safety should be rooted in trust, community building, and addressing the root causes of harm. Instead, this city continues to fund policing, incarceration, surveillance, and other harmful practices that degrade public safety, public trust, and negatively impact black and brown and low-income residents. Our focus should be on investing funds in this city in ways that support the well-being of our residents and especially our young people. We also cannot overlook the connections that someone else brought up earlier between policing and surveillance in Baltimore and the ongoing genocide of Palestinians in Gaza by the Israeli state. Baltimore City Police Department partners with Israel Surveillance Companies to produce technologies that, such as this, that are also used on Palestinian citizens. Baltimore taxpayers shouldn't have to pay to be surveilled by the same Israeli companies and through those tactics target Palestinians, and we should not be funding their work. To conclude, in order to pursue justice and well-being in Baltimore and around the world, regulating FRT is not enough. The industry will adapt to whatever guardrails we try to put on it, and a ban is the only answer. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your testifying from the classroom. So that, any additional testimony? I don't see any additional folks joining us virtually with a hand raise. No more folks here in person. Any additional questions from council members here? Seeing no questions. Appreciate you guys. The committee will go into recess, and we will revisit this bill in the future. Thank you.